I do whatever I feel like is appropriate.
But anyway, I've tried.
Was it rubber chicken today?
Uh, at the luncheon, it was, it was, it was the typical Texas meal taco kind of deal. You know, beef.
And floater for something about.
Y'all, y'all eat beef over here big time.
At the sheriff's conference, the meal on Lexon was really good.
Yeah.
It was kind of surprised, almost rubber chicken.
Is that not what my part is?
Councilman, you want to lead us in prayer?
I'd be glad to.
Thank you, sir. It's, uh, it's close. We've got forty-five seconds. Let's get ready to govern. I'll get the gavel warmed up.
Not too loud, Mayor, please.
It's been so long since it was loud.
Well, yeah, no.
I've never had that problem that was low.
Chief, I tried to give him a sing happy birthday to him. They didn't want to do it.
I say community interest.
Did I hear, did I hear birthday? No, he's.
He's catching up with you.
Well, we can still sing.
He's catching up with you.
You got a long way to go.
I'll now call to order this meeting of the City of White House Council for today, August the sixth of twenty twenty-four. It is six P M. Ms. Hargis, will you please call roll?
Yes, sir. James Wonsley.
Here.
Zach Frisco.
Here.
Georgia Harris.
Here.
John Chambers.
Here.
Michael Lo.
Here.
And Matt Lazarine.
Here.
We have a court.
Excellent. Please stand if you're able to join Councilman Lowe as he leads us in a word of prayer.
Dear heavenly Father, thank you for yet another day that we are allowed to serve our city. Bless White House and bless our staff and all the first responders and keep them safe. Help us to make the very best decisions that we can possibly do for our city. Thank you for everything and forgive us of our sins. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Please join the council and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, indivisible.
Let's flood that one. All righty. That sounded great. You can tell the Olympic spirit's in the room. Love hearing it. Uh, that brings us down to item D of presentations. This is Black.
Would you not have any slides?
All right, that part's done. So we're going to go down to item E, community interest. There are some items up there. You take us through those, Mrs. Black.
Mayor and Council, just a reminder that election filing is open for places two, four, and the mayor position through August nineteenth. A reminder that we are moving our August meeting dates. Of course, tonight is August sixth, and then our next one will be August twentieth. And then back to school starts August fourteenth.
Hard to believe. Oh, will be our next meeting. They'll be in the school.
Move on quickly.
Could, could tell that traffic starts back August fourteenth.
New time doubles.
You ain't kidding. You're not kidding.
So just a reminder to everybody to slow down, watch out for buses, kids across some streets, all those things.
And speaking of back to school, I was good to see, I was glad to see that the concrete was poured on time for the back entrance to the E S C. That was great. Tell them thank you for that.
Right here, we can tell them.
Oh, y'all are here?
I'm excited.
Thanks for getting that concrete down. Appreciate that. Y'all snuck in on me. Uh, anything else on the matter of community interest from council? All right, that takes us down to public forum. I didn't see any signups, Ms. Hargis. Nobody signed up for public forums. So that takes us down to the consent agenda. Council, you'll see there's one item on your consent agenda. It's the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting for July twenty-third of twenty twenty-four. If there's nothing in those minutes, do you like to move on to the regular agenda? Then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. With that, the consent agenda is approved. Moving on to item H, other action items, ordinances, resolutions, and public hearings. Number one is set the proposed twenty twenty-four, twenty-five tax rate, take a record vote, and setting of the public hearing date. Who's taking this one?
Hello, Mayor.
Mrs. Black.
Mayor and Council, we've been working diligently with the Smith County Tax Office and the city's tax attorneys to develop the twenty twenty-four tax rate calculation worksheet as required by the state of Texas. And we do have a unique situation this year. If you all remember, in November of twenty twenty-three, our voters approved abolishing the additional sales tax to reduce property tax. That creates some unique calculation challenges based on this form. The comptroller, who is the role-making authority for the tax rate calculation worksheet, does not account for abolishing the sales tax to reduce property tax in this rate calculation worksheet. So working with Lon Marger, who is the city's tax attorneys, and we got their advice. We checked in with the comptroller, who refers back to our attorney, and feel like this rate, or this worksheet appropriately captures the abolishment of the sales tax to reduce property tax. And it's most accurately reflected on the very last page under section eight, the new revenue tax rate. You'll see out, um, under the narrative for that, where we have line twenty-six plus line forty-eight divided by line fifty-three comes under it. It is specifically accounted for in the comptroller's examples for the sales tax, abolishing the sales tax to reduce property tax. All that is to say that our no new revenue rate, according to these calculations, would be seventy, just over seventy-six cents. Our voter approval tax rate at just over seventy-nine cents, and our de minimis rate also at just over seventy-nine cents. To talk about what makes up a tax rate, it's made up of both our maintenance and operations, our M and O portion of the tax rate, and I N S, which is for debt service. The no new revenue rate is a tax rate that would result in generating the same amount of property tax revenue as the prior fiscal year. Um, our current tax rate is point seven one seven eight five five. The no new revenue rate in this calculation is point seven six three eight four nine. And it is not because our values decreased. Our values increased. We added new construction to the tax rolls. However, because we abolished the sales tax to reduce property tax, we had two sources of income previously that were taken into account in this calculation. We've removed one as we've dedicated more to the E D C, and so it drives that rate a little bit higher to capture the same amount of revenue. Same thing for our voter approval tax rate. Your voter approval rate is your no new revenue rate plus three and a half percent for your revenue. And the de minimis rate is the rate that it would take to generate five hundred thousand dollars in additional property tax revenues. Here's kind of an overview of what our certified appraisals look like this year. So I'm comparing last year's appraisals to this year's. We had about a five percent increase, about a three and a half percent increase in that taxable value. So that takes into account exemptions, um, abatements, some of those types of things. You can see here that we removed our sales tax to reduce property tax out of this calculation. Um, in twenty-three, twenty-four, we had about forty-two million dollars in new construction, which was a record-setting year and something we realized would not, uh, likely be the case this year. You see it at about eighteen million, which is about, on average, what we've experienced over the last several years, except for last year. Um, slight increase in our debt payment. We expected that as part of the twenty twenty-two C O issuance. Our M and O property tax revenue, we are showing an increase in the budget of about fourteen point two percent. However, when you look at our financials, we have collected right at three point one million dollars in property tax revenue the current year. So we are still maintaining a conservative approach to budgeting our property tax revenue. I just wanted to have that in there for your information. You can also see what abolishing the sales tax to reduce property tax does to those tax rates and how they went up from the prior year. However, I do want to show that on that very bottom line, point seven one seven eight five five is the adopted tax rate for the current fiscal year, and that is what we're also proposing for the upcoming fiscal year. So with those changes in sales tax coming out of the general fund and more going to E D C, we feel like it's prudent to maintain that tax rate this year to do operations, help us get, um, city center staffed and, and open when that comes online. And so that is staff's recommendation. Here's a look at our historical tax rates since twenty twenty, twenty-eleven. Um, you can see, we did have a slight change this year between our maintenance operations and our debt tax rate, but it's so small, it's kind of hard to see. It was about five hundredths of a penny. We'll have not much of an impact at all on either our debt collection or maintenance operations rates. And this is a look at the total tax bill in municipalities in Smith County. So, um, oftentimes when you're comparing property tax rates, people tend to compare a city's tax rate, like the city of Lindell versus the city of White House, or an even better example is the city of Bullard versus the city of White House. But you have to remember that, um, some municipalities also pay the emergency service district taxes for fire service, where that is, that's included in our municipal tax rate. So we, we do this just to kind of show what that looks like for taxpayers across the board and kind of level the playing field on those. So you can see there, the orange line is the average across the county, and kind of we fall just above that. And that's all I have. Staff is happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any, uh, any questions from council? I know a lot of this was covered in more detail in our last meeting that we had. So that there's not a whole lot of new information here, other than the actual numbers, which I know took some work, so thanks for grinding it out on that.
Going forward, will it be a little easier on the calculations, or is it going to be like this every year?
It will be much easier. So it's, it's simply because the form does not account for this first year to abolish it.
Got it.
Um, next year, we will still have some questions because this form asks you to put in the amount of sales tax to reduce property tax received in the last four quarters. So we will have one quarter in this current fiscal year that we're collecting that. So we'll need a legal opinion on not including that because it is not impacting our twenty twenty-four property tax revenue increase. So, um, we will probably have to get a legal opinion next year as well, but hopefully that'll be a little bit more straightforward after that.
Okay.
Yeah, I was asking, Mrs. Black, is like, is it equivalent to filing taxes as an adult as opposed to what it was like filing the ten forty easy as a child? So it's going to be a lot, it's going to be a lot easier, kind of aligns with that.
Sure.
Any more questions from council? All right. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
And Mayor and Council, there's very specific wording in your packet on what that motion.
The recommended motion paragraph?
Yes.
I'll read it. All right. I propose that we pass a motion to propose a total tax rate of point seven one seven eight five five per one hundred dollars evaluation for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year, where point four two eight zero zero three is to be used for maintenance and operations, and point two eight nine eight five two for interest and sinking funds, and set the public hearing on the tax rate for six P M. on August twentieth, twenty twenty-four, at three eleven East Main Street, White House, Texas.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's have a roll call vote. Ms. Hargis?
Sir, Matt Lazarine.
Yes.
Zach Frisco.
Yes.
Michael Lo.
Yes.
Georgia Harris.
Yes.
And John Chambers.
Yes.
All right. With that, it passes unanimously. See you all on the twentieth. Moving down to item H two, discussion consideration and approval of the change orders for one oh nine East Main repurposing project, city center. Who's leading this off here? Mrs. Black.
Mayor and Council, as you all know, we purchased the property at one oh nine East Main a couple of years ago now, and have been working to redevelop that into the city's first ever community center. We've been working with Randall Scott Architects and Watson Commercial Construction on that project. As a part of that project, you all did approve a guaranteed maximum price of just over seven point two million dollars earlier this spring. And that price included all of the known factors for construction on that project. As you can imagine, as they've gotten a little bit further into demolition, we have found some, I believe we're calling them discoveries, not problems. So, um, most notably, there were two notable things that are part of this change order. One is that there is no rebar or grade beams under the western end of that slab foundation. And so that needs to be remedied before they start framing up. And then there were some framing issues, particularly on how the second floor of the building running east and west was framed to lean on the first floor of the building running north and south. And Brady Watson with Watson Commercial Construction is here, can answer construction questions if you have them. But Eric Opferman with Randall Scott Architects is also here to, uh, to talk about this change order. Should you have any questions, staff is happy to answer any questions you want to know.
I mean, the slab's pretty obvious. We need rebar in there. They're trying to put stuff on top of it. I could imagine that that was a weekend project where some people got together and poured that slab. But any, any questions from council?
Yeah, all might have been answered.
Okay.
Yeah, so I've got the, I've got the change order here. I know you have it as well.
Can you please state your name for us?
My name's Eric Opferman, Randall Scott Architects.
Thank you, sir.
But yeah, if you have any questions about any of the individual items, I'd be glad to address that. I know Leslie might have walked with some of you on site, um, so I know you may have seen some of these firsthand, but, um, I can't address some of the structural concerns, at least that our engineer has provided to us, uh, for each of these issues. But as Leslie has stated, um, these items will be considered outside of the original contract. You know, these items were not, uh, these were unknowns going into the project. A lot of this was covered up with interior finishes, exterior finishes, um, even some of the C N U, as Brady might be able to attest to, while it looks good on the outside. If there's no reinforcing in the middle of it, then as soon as they start cutting holes in it, it starts crumbling. And so, for instance, with some of, with some of the C N U walls not having rebar, that was something that, you know, we wouldn't have been able to tell until Brady and his team was able to, uh, dig into it, uh, literally start digging into it. And so, um, so you got all of these issues that are laid out before us, are items that have been discovered by Brady and his team. There are things that, uh, we didn't know at the time. Obviously, it's, it's a fairly old building, but, uh, from what we could tell, these were not identifiable items when we were putting together the drawings. And so that's why, at least, these will be considered outside of the original contract, outside of the original construction scope. And that's why we are suggesting that they be, uh, issued as a change order and not as something of, uh, construction contingency.
And if approved, how much time does this add to the project?
Looks like fifty days total.
Yes. Forty, remember, forty days, calendar days. Ten, uh, this, this item number ten is, uh, so there will be additional time that will be needed whenever they remove the existing slab. We'll need to test the soils underneath that existing foundation because we're coming back in with a new foundation where the old one was. Um, and so Brady and his team will need about ten days, it appears, to be able to test that soil, make sure that it's compacted, make sure that it, um, has the right consistency to be able to bear the new foundation.
With that being said, all the structural elements have been exposed now, so we don't anticipate more of this type of, uh, change order, correct?
Correct. Anything else there?
Yes, sir, please.
Yeah.
So Brady Watson, Watson Commercial Construction, uh, yeah, we've pretty much, we've cut into every slab. We've cut into every wall at this point. Um, so, uh, unless there's really something hiding behind something that we can't see, but I don't know what that would be. I mean, if y'all walked it last week, it's, it's pretty much apart. So I can't imagine there being anything else that we're going to find that's major. I mean, of course, that's what construction contingency is there for too, is you find little things here and there, like we already have. We found a pit and some of the stuff that were hidden. But as far as major structural issues, yeah, I think, uh, we're in pretty good shape there.
But we saved quite a bit of money using that existing building, right, instead of starting from scratch?
Yeah, I, I'm the wrong person to ask. Yeah. But what I mean by that is, we bid what's designed, and so I, um, have no idea what the cost analysis on that would be. You know, you could build a brand-new building for fifty million, or you can remodel one for seven, or you could build one for two. It just depends on what kind of building you want.
Yeah.
Um, the joke around our offices, the whole reason that the tallest building is the tallest building, the nicest building is the nicest building, because somebody hadn't found enough money and time to build something nicer or bigger. So, um, you know, cost is, is pretty relative in terms of what building you want. So I don't know. Maybe some air could speak to you a little more, but, you know. I don't know. That's the best I got.
Yeah, the, uh, when we toured that location, the, uh, the craftsmanship on the rafters, something you were pointing out to us, how they use cut nails, so nails that were punched out of, what did they use, steel?
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, so. With all the stuff we lost on the south side of three forty-six when that was torn down, uh, I, I think we all feel this way. Preserving what historical buildings that we have here is, is a good thing. I'm glad you guys are, it, I mean, you could tell you were being careful because all that stuff is preserved that you pointed out to us. And today at lunch, I met the minister. That was the minister of that church when they added the second, second-story addition over there. And I said, hey, you didn't pour a slab over on the west side of it, did you? I said, oh, no, we didn't, we didn't expand the building in that direction. I was like, okay. Ask some questions for him to begin.
With these older buildings, as we all can probably attest to, especially as the older media, we can attest more to it, but things are not built the way that they used to be, you know? Uh, older buildings generally have, while they may be older, uh, they're, they were tend to have built, uh, better than today's structure, or at least in, in a generalized sense. But the areas that are identified in this change order, uh, we can definitely tell that they were added on to after the fact. Uh, both, uh, both the section that's on the west wing and the section that's southern portion of the east wing, uh, we can definitely tell that they were added later by, you know, it was, these filled together at some point.
Yeah.
And so these areas, these, the area on the west wing, I think bears probably some of the more significant expense. And this particular area, we did, at the start of the project, take note of the deflecting ridge beam. The roof, we could tell, was collapsing on itself.
Yeah, it was sagging.
And so, you know, because of that, we could identify, look, this is something that needs to be replaced. And so we were able to account for that in the original contract.
Right.
But as Brady and his team started cutting holes in the C N U walls, started, you noticed the rebar was missing. Whenever y'all were cutting out the holes for the new pilasters. Yeah, we were cutting holes for the footings for the pilasters that'll hold the glue lamp beams. And when we cut those out, you know, you expect to see some metal, and you didn't. So we found those there. And to his point, the C N U, uh, none of it's filled. None of it's got rebar in it. And so that's, that's okay. It's just going to stay up in a straight line. But if you try to cut doors into that, windows into that, uh, you know, that's where you really get in trouble. And so any of those pieces of walls that we were trying to save, uh, wasn't going to happen. And then on the south end, where we'd have to reframe that, I think that was actually originally just a porch. And we need to make the building better, bigger, because where you're talking about, the original rafters, that part of the building is rock solid. It's great. That's obviously, not the same person that did those rafters did the end of that building. Somebody came back at some point, added that on, and then somebody came back at some point and cut some of that out, which made it worse. But, uh, so you can definitely see, you can just walk through there and see where they added. Would have been nice if they put dates on it, for we would know who to, to buy.
Yeah. Yeah, would, have you gone by to see it after it's been exposed?
Yes.
Is there any of that, any of that, uh, sorry?
We have weekly onsite meetings.
Oh, okay. So yeah, you've seen it. Is there, is there anything in the architectural part of this? I know we plan on covering those ceilings and those rafters completely. In your opinion, architecturally, is there anything worth exposing there that may save us money on ceilings and actually expose this or stuff?
Well, we're, we are doing that on the east side. So on the east side, um, I guess the west wing has the glue lamps, uh, on, that are supporting the roof. On the east side, the tresses are pulling the roof up. And we did take note of those tresses during the design process, and we're leaving them exposed.
Yeah. Oh, excellent. Okay.
So, uh, so there is some cost savings there for the ceilings, uh, and help express the structure of that roof. So that will be exposed. It'll be a pretty neat space, I think, once it's all completely finished out.
And then Mayor and Council, just to circle back what you mentioned earlier in the meeting, the concrete drive is poured and will be opened with the first day.
Yeah, that was great. Hey, that didn't take forty days to pour that slab. I'm just saying, you guys got that done pretty quick. So I'm looking at this forty and thinking.
Which some, uh, I will say that that forty, and Brady can probably attest to this, um, some of that forty is also due to some of the structural, uh, redrawings that had to occur. So some of that, some of that was, um, on, you know, time for me and my engineers to rework drawings. Some of that was for Brady and his team to get construction pricing, and some of it is for this.
So we've already gotten into those forty days, like.
Essentially, yes.
Yeah. And so it's not going to be forty days to do the work. We've already accumulated some days leading up to doing the work.
Yeah, we estimated it'll take, uh, around thirty days to do all the work. Yes, we lost ten, just do finding stuff, designing stuff, days that would have been work on those areas that are no longer days, work on those areas, things like that. Uh, but I mean, you know, based on y'all's approval, we've got, the demo guy will be there Friday, and Frank will be there on Monday. So, you know, it's easier to call somebody off than to get them scheduled, so.
I just didn't want anybody to look at this forty and think, why would it take forty days?
Correct, yeah.
Some of those are already gone.
Yeah, correct, yeah, that's correct.
And it doesn't mean nothing else is happening for forty days.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Right. And like Eric said, same thing with the testing. Uh, you know, once we get the slab pulled off, we've got E T T L in, and they have to test it. They take it back to their lab. That's four or five days. It might take two days to get them out there. And so, you know, a lot of the days aren't so much working days as they are just lost days to, you can't work on it until certain things happen.
I'm just happy y'all's group found it and are addressing it because that's, that's important, so.
Yeah, yeah. It would have been bad if we didn't know about this lab for sure. That's probably the worst of it. And really, the south wing, um, that south wing is rough. So, um, second floor was our, you know, my dad's seventy-two. He's been in construction for fifty-two years. And that was one of the few times I've ever heard him say, I've never seen anything like that. So, um, he's seen slabs without rebar. He's seen some shiny framing, but I don't think he's seen anything like that, so.
And y'all, y'all found some windows on the south side of it that were covered up on both sides, right?
Yeah, I think we found thirteen. I'm trying to remember what that, thirteen openings that we couldn't see that were covered up. You know, some of them were windows. They may have been old A C units, couple of old doorways.
Thing was ventilated like Swiss cheese. It's just the wind was blowing through.
Yeah, yeah, something like that.
Okay.
Encore. No problem?
I wouldn't say no problem.
We're getting there then, huh?
We're getting there. Yeah, we're getting there. So really, what's fine is right now is they are working on the Chapel Hill schools that need to be done by the time Chapel Hill starts next Thursday. Uh, now I think, um, she was saying, they were actually ready to come out. We're still waiting on two and a half months. The one day they picked to come out was the day we were pouring the east side drive, uh, so they couldn't come up that day. Uh, so I think, you know, you know, really, the only thing that all we're slowing us down on is the west side. Uh, we need to do all the site work on the west side. We got to cut some trees down, start digging up some dirt, things like that. But that won't kill us on time.
Oh, those are line relocations, right, to get those power lines out of the way?
Yeah, most of them are dead. They won't be used anymore. We have that one relocation to feed the rental property that's right down the street from us. Um, the rest of them are just coming out because we'll go underground from the pole to the new building.
That's great.
Now, y'all are proceeding, we're doing something to make sure that maybe one day in the future, we'll have an L E D sign, underground wiring to the front.
Yeah, I'll let. Yeah, so, um, so during the design process, you know, we laid out a location for our key sign, our monument sign.
Okay.
Uh, we had the foundations there. We have electrical and a conduit stubbed up so that whenever it's ready to go, um, it's ready to go.
He submitted a preliminary design to me that we're reviewing right now.
Good, okay. Good deal.
That's within budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, wow. Something neon.
Slab's got to be.
It's not a neon sign.
We'll take anything.
Electrical, but not neon. Uh, any more questions for these guys, council?
Done for me?
Thanks for funding.
Yeah, thanks for your diligence, working through and up to the rain days and everything else you've been carrying along the way. So appreciate you.
Yeah, very much.
Rain days are over for a minute at least.
Yeah, we'll take it on the freeze. That's okay.
Hopefully, we're about a month.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, discussion, comments from council? I'll make the motion to approve change orders and associated cost proposals for the one oh nine East Main repurposing project, city center.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. With that, the motion carries unanimously. That takes it down to item H three, consider future agenda items. Here's some.
Uh, Mayor and Council, this is just what's on my list. I haven't even talked to Susan about what's on her list. So, um, we will do our public hearings and hopefully adoption and approval of our budget and tax rate on August twentieth. And we do have a proposal for an online citizen request system where citizens could request that we take a look at the issues, whether it be potholes, code enforcement, um, some of those kind of things. And they would be able to track the status of those issues online and would receive follow-up and kind of back and forth. It's a, I think it would be, well, we'll go into that on August twentieth. We'll bring that before you. Um, we do have the three quotes for electrical service out at Lockawak Creek Trail Pavilion.
Oh, yeah.
We'll bring that back to you.
So we got two more of those. That's good.
On August twentieth. And we have been working and have released a request for qualifications for someone to come in and do our charter review, home rule charter review process over the next year. So we'll bring this back to you on August twentieth and kind of talk about that process and what it looks like. And then, um, we have a proposal that will maybe come to you in September to look at some drainage improvements that are needed along Walker Street.
Anything else council would like to see on the upcoming agendas? All right. Sounds like a pretty good, pretty good agenda right there. All right, then that takes.
I was going to ask, I did see someone asked in the White House meeting page, and I didn't know the answer and haven't circled back on the sign at the corner. Our status on.
Our status, I'm getting that back up.
Somebody responded to the comment, but I didn't know who that person was.
Okay, I didn't know, I didn't even see that.
We have a young man in our community who actually restored the sign several years ago, who volunteered to take that sign and either repair it or construct a new one, so he is working on that. I do not have a timeframe for him. Um, he is young and working full-time, I understand, so it is a good opportunity.
Yeah, there's a lot of people, I hear about it all the time. I get it a lot.
Yeah.
My daughter asked me about it when we were driving home the other day.
When I saw that issue, it was the first time that I was like, oh, yeah, where, where is our sign?
So we should include something maybe in our newsletter, or do an update about him, and that way we can share it with him.
Yeah, if there's any, any way that we can help and expedite that, I bet people wouldn't mind being a part of that process, just to help.
I did it last time, and I would like to see it, I would like to see it expedited, and, you know, that's a part of our city, I don't know. I don't mean, just if, but he is indeed working on it, right, it's a fact. Okay, okay.
Yeah, even with all the tree damage we got in the last set of the storms, the big thing was our sign. It was almost like the city, the city was sideways because our sign was down, so.
Because we just, we just refurbished it, rehanded it, you know, gosh, with steel rods down in the middle and here, but mother nature, you know?
Yeah, the wind just happened to blow that way to catch it like a sail. All right, uh, so yeah, we can get a, I don't know that that needs to be an agenda item. Do you want to send out an update on that?
It's been a shame to you.
Okay.
But there, there's no costs that isn't current that we need to assist with, that we know?
Minor shenanigans that used to occur.
All right, anything else on the agenda, upcoming agendas? All right, well, that takes us down to item I, executive session, of which we have none, so we don't need to do J, which is reconvene. We're down to item K, adjourn. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, stay here. Time is six thirty. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Full tip.
Thank you.
Oh, I remember, two years, man, so, that's enough, my day, I shouldn't eat chocolate, eat no peanuts.
They're a little more relaxed now.
They are, they really are. But nineteen sixty-seven.
Maybe earlier.